All right, good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. And the first item on the agenda is the board resignation, Pauline Stone's resignation as a member. That was filed to the district clerk on seven twenty-nine, twenty-first of twenty, this year. And it was made effective on the first of August. Just a quick note that when we had a prior resignation, tonight we will be appointing one board member, because that's how it was announced. But we do have a second board member, Pauline, that resigned. So we're going to appoint that person at the next board meeting. So, because it was all announced for one, we'll do that. And we'll go again and do an announcement publicly for the second person. We'll reevaluate everything, so there's still a chance for people to turn in information if they want to update it or whatever. And we'll do that later on in the last part of the board meeting.
Are you gonna take your own letters or work?
We will.
So just like we did the first time, but?
Exactly.
The second time, the announcement, the letters, and I have a date.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Exactly. Okay, we also had people that tried to put in a letter and missed a date by like one day or something.
Yeah, I had one lady call me and she actually brought me the letter and I brought it with me. And she said it was late. And at that time, I didn't know about Pauline Stone, I just told her.
Right, right. Yeah, we've got pretty stickers about dates with all applicants in the district. So it's only fair to be the same with everybody, right? All right, so a call to order. Question? Roll a call, please.
Uh, Bubba Stevie.
Here.
Pam McLen. Oh, Pam, sorry.
That's okay.
Cheryl. Cheryl McKenzie.
Here.
Ed Hannon.
Here.
Christopher Moshaw. Crystal Farmer.
Here.
No, Paulie Ford.
Here.
You have a call. Approval of the agenda. Resolved Superintendent Schools recommend to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. May I have motion, please?
Not motion.
Doug?
I'll say it.
Crystal? Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes. Okay, we have a small section for public comment. Is anyone interested in doing public comment? All right, we'll go forward. Reports, Superintendent Schools.
No, thinking that, oh, sorry. I'll keep it short, because I know that we have some longer discussions to end the meeting. The reopening committee did meet, I think that's on this, yeah, the reopening committee's on here as well. The reopening committee did meet. I thought there was a lot of good discussion, a lot of good, a lot of process was developed. That should help us in September. We will have one more meeting with the reopening committee to see where we are now. And I know that the committee has a couple of subgroups that are gonna try to work together to build a couple addendums maybe to the reopening process. But it really looks like we should be able to open up with majority of our kids coming, or all of our kids coming back to school. And that is aligned with the CDC in New York State saying it's paramount to have our kids come back to school and then follow all the safety precautions that you possibly need.
Excellent. Great. Jennifer?
I'll keep mine short, too. You'll see in the agenda that the tax rates, we calculated the tax rates at sixteen seventy-one thousand. But it compares to last year a little differently. All the townships are all one hundred percent equalized this year, so everybody has the same tax rate. Last year, Pottsburg was only at ninety percent, so they had an eighteen, I believe it was eighteen oh eight tax rate. And West Wazee, Altona, and Beadmentown had sixteen twenty-eight. So that's a comparison to last year. So the rates were all set, they were sent to the county today. Tax collection will start September first. The tax warrants were all signed, so that's where we're at. We finished the audit the last week of July. I'll be, we'll be getting the audit committee together as soon as we get the finalized audit, which would be probably the next two to three weeks. So that's where we're standing.
Great. Does anyone have questions for the agenda? All right, okay. Moving forward. Riley's not here yet. Let's go over the standard. Committee reports, professional development. What about the PD?
The PD committee, actually, there's a lot of members in the audience from the PD committee. We met, we revised the plan. The plan, when it was submitted five years ago, at that point in time was a three-year plan. And then State Ed moved that three-year to, moved the, moved it so that the plan could be eligible to exist for five years. So it looks like the committee went through and edited all the main parts of the plan, took out some of the things we no longer do, put in some of the things we do do. I think everybody was really happy with the work. It's more of a global look at PD. And then each year, we started drilling down into what we wanted, what do we want to do with our teachers. Last thing on PD, we really don't have a lot of time for professional development. We have four days. Two days are stuffed with mandates and some local, some PD decisions that we get to make. And then we have one more day, and then the Teachers Association has one day that's in the contract. Actually, trace that back to like the original contracts, so back to like seventy-one. The board agreed to give the teachers a PD day. So we don't have a lot of time for professional development. We do, if we have subs, try to send our people out for professional development that aligns with our goals or our initiatives.
Has that changed in any way, or is it, it will still be the four days?
It's still, yeah, we can't, we can't. The only way we can change that is if we took a look at the, there's a new regulation last few years of nine hundred and ninety hours of school. Elementary and high school students need to have nine hundred or nine hundred and ninety hours of school in front of a teacher being instructed. If we found that we had more time than that, we could actually say, we're gonna give away this instructional time and use it for PD time, instructional time for the staff. We haven't been, we've been pretty tight on those times. We can take a look, we take a look every time about this year, what the bell schedules and what counts. Like recess doesn't count as time in front of a teacher, changing classes doesn't count as time in front of a teacher, lunch doesn't count as time in front of the teacher. So we're pretty tight at getting to nine hundred and ninety hours.
Just out of curiosity, does ELT or ELO count?
Yeah, all that, well, ELO doesn't count, but ELT did count. The reason why ELO doesn't count is because everybody's not there during one period of time.
Okay, Oliver?
Um, so Pauline has been busy working and excited about the events. Putting homecoming alumni weekend, met last week. Sorry, don't have my exact dates, yes, last week. And are working on getting the caterer set up and involving students in the process. I think that's gonna be really special for all the members who are gonna be inducted. And starting to think about advertising the event to the community, selling tickets and getting sponsorships for tables. And I believe Mr. Laber said the hall, everything was supposed to be coming in to start installing the actual physical hall.
What about now? Has there been any movement there?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Did I miss anything from my last meeting for the folks over there? Oh, yes, the raffle, that's a great fundraising idea that is gonna be, what the community, it was the community who know about that in the details of my last.
All right.
Anything else? Questions? Any questions?
Safety.
Is there anybody else there? Safety committee met. Probably gonna confuse safety committee with reopening committee. Is there anything? Oh, Patty, but you, go ahead.
Yeah, but I wasn't there for the whole thing, because we had a family emergency.
Oh.
And we had a fresh tumor on our student's mother.
Oh, sorry.
And, yeah, everything was fine, thank God, but it was like only a PR and stuff. So I really, I really haven't been able to anything.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about our school resource officer, something just came across the mail. Emailed today on that. I've got it connected with the Sheriff's Department. We did reinvest with the two safety officers. Everything, I saw a message from you today, I'm on vacation today, look at me, I'm on vacation. Is everything good with the whole resource officers? Is there?
We just have one lone glitch.
One lone glitch you gotta work on. Who can help me with safety committee? What else did we go over? Go ahead, Miss.
I have my notes right here. I won't go in detail with everything, I'll keep it kind of short. But we did talk about lunches in all the different buildings and making sure that we're consistent as far as where we're eating and how we're doing that with lunchers and being as far apart as we possibly can.
Yeah.
I know we're in over that with the reopening committee, so I won't hammer that. We also talked about, you know, outside food coming in, that's gonna be important. Talked about isolation rooms, what they need to look like, and the SRAs, like I mentioned.
Okay. So the outside, I think to meet the reopening committee, or one of the two committees, did we adjust and say that packaged food?
The reopening we did, isn't that right?
Yeah, the reopening, okay, yeah. So food can't come in this year, but it's gotta be like prepackaged, not like in cup cases.
All right. And you already went over the reopening committee, so.
I think so.
I think we're good there. All right. Minutes as presented. Resolved Superintendent Schools recommend to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Did we have, don't we have a reopening committee, or was that?
Yes, we went over that.
I thought we just had safety.
Yes, we went over the reopening part. We can go over it.
Yeah, so.
That was her part. That was his.
He went over when Dan went over as superintendent section.
Oh, okay, all right.
No, but we can, we can just, I have any questions?
I just thought we were gonna have an in-depth thing about masks and what spectators and sports are gonna do and what kids are gonna do on the plane. The whole deal, I didn't know it was gonna be that brief.
Okay, all right, well, that's a good, good question. Want to elaborate on that?
So it's, the New York State Education Department came out with guidance after the governor said they were working on masks. And they basically said, the mask is pretty good, it wasn't problematic for us, I don't think. But it was basically follow CDC guidance. CDC guidance is everybody wear a ma, right now it's everybody wear a mask, even if you're vaccinated. And it's put a premium on having everybody in school and as safe as you possibly can. So the, we are allowed to be at three feet socially distanced. This year we were, I think it's a tailwind than last year. We will, we will use three feet when we need to, we'll use six feet or eight feet when we can, too. We kinda talked about that with lunches, can we get everybody in with three feet? Yeah, but can, can we get, I think most schools can get them in with six feet, and then some were more than three feet. So that's where we are. Sports, well, I mentioned to all of our athletic, excuse me, to all of our school, schools, superintendents that regardless of what the section says, we will have spectators. Unless something comes out from the state, we will have spectators. Last year was a section thing, and because a couple of schools couldn't have spectators, no schools could have spectators. And I tried to fight that this year, and they will have to fight us, because it doesn't make sense when we have all the space we need. You know, Peru doesn't have the space, or Seaton doesn't have the space, that's a problem, I get it. That's not our problem. So we will have spectators, unless there's some edict that comes out and says you can't. Or obviously, if we find out that's unhealthy or there's a transmission, we'll need to stop and redo all that. Kids who are right now, it looks like, will play indoors with masks outdoors, they'll be fine. Football seems, there's all sorts of questions about football, I've been seeing that, what they're gonna do. Internally, let's go through lunches, classrooms, we want to stay as spread as far as we can. And the hallway, single file, we're gonna keep the buses, the bus drop-offs staggered that we did last year, that worked well. Prior, everybody would get dropped off, come into the same entrance, and it was like, you know, it was just like everybody was walking in the hall together. We still get a little bit of that at dismissal time, because, you know, everybody is getting picked up at the same time. But we staggered the drop-offs, so that kids walk in really slow and different, from different entrances. It really worked well last year. What other pieces are, are either new or continuing with reopening? We're gonna use hand sanitizers, masks, spacing, you know, hygiene, like I've been here. What else might I suggest?
The water fountains will still be. Water fill, no more, not water fountains, but the filling stations.
Yeah, we invested in the filling stations years ago. Big one is, oh, I'll turn over to you guys in a second. The big one is no real remote option. Where we found that the excuses, that teachers did a great job, plenty of families, and students benefited greatly from our wonderful, excellent remote option. But it was very, very difficult on the teachers, and we found that a lot of kids who absolutely needed to be in school, these are kids that we would struggle with and are not COVID here getting in school, weren't necessarily coming, weren't, may not have been coming to school, and, but it might not have been because of COVID. So we need the kids in school, CDC says you need the kids in school, all the government officials said get the kids in school. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get the kids in school, that's gonna be what we're gonna do. What did we miss?
Just, we talked about the mask chart, we thought about going together with a mask chart on hospitalization rate, vaccination rate, the number of cases in Clinton County. Kind of, you know, create a chart based on all those elements. We discussed PE having, and the following sports guidance somewhere outside, or in PE, their following sports guidance is a program. We also talked about banning cores being six feet apart when they're advanced, because we get to miss bowling, be a little bit farther, three feet, so over some of the other pieces that we talked about.
Okay. Oh, that was, I'm sorry.
We mentioned redoing the daily screening question. We'll consider having to actively enter the temperature, because we referred to a no question to check, no. We may have a difference for students or insurance yet. We did agree to meet again, clarify if we would have any leeway in, maybe we were adding wearing masks to a maybe a school vaccination rate, combined with the CDC guidance, kind of what we thought the body was doing. I think we said we're going to go to two per bus seat, because we keep all the windows down.
It's two or, or less, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna find ourselves in a situation where we can't send a kid to school because of our rules. So we have to bend our rules to have the kids in school, that's in alignment with the CDC guidance. Get the kids in school, that's our highest priority, as safe as you can. You know, we, sorry, Nick, we, we talked about, you know, families with three, you know, and daycare providers, that was really weird, right? You have six kids pulling, pulling out from a daycare provider, and they get on the bus and they gotta be, you know, six or eight feet apart, whatever it was. So, you know, there's different people in different situations that we could come in, sorry.
And we also mentioned that when we met again, we can see if anything came to Clinton County, but to determine what the criteria would be for contact tracing. CDC says six feet or fifteen, CDC actually says if students wore masks, there's no contact tracing needed in Clinton County, had a couple of major metrics last year. So we'll see if they give us something else, whether it's up to us, what we're going, so. If there is another meeting, some of the bigger ones, like contact tracing and masks.
So Mr. Bazile, on your point, I can't remember, was it mask chart or mask rate? What is that?
We talked about mask charts based on hospitalization rate, based on the number of cases in Clinton County. So kind of like the matrix we have for bringing kids back to school, how many days it was that we had in our reopening plan last year, and now we'll do one for masks. So if we have a certain percentage, maybe we go without masks, because we don't have any hospitalization rate, we don't have that many cases in Clinton County, we can remove the mask for that time period. Increase, again, we go back to masks, so we talked a little bit about having that, start to break that.
Like a break, right? So like, you know, kids are six feet apart in the classroom, and the teacher wants to be reading a story to them and see facial expressions, and there's low cases, maybe that would work, would having some type of, you know, what did we use before, green light, yellow light, red light, like, you know, if we have a thousand cases in our county and, you know, schools are, we'd be red, right? A mask chart would be red, everyone would be wearing masks, except for eating and drinking first. If it's green, you know, maybe we can be a little more lenient, because it's more, more bright light.
Theoretically, you could actually be in a zero hospitalization, zero case rate, eighty-five percent vaccination rate, and you could just have the whole school just be without masks, and hope we get there.
Thank you. Appreciate it. No problem. The other change, Mr. Manix, would be in the locker rooms. We're gonna be using locker rooms this year, which is gonna be big with ball sports starting on Monday. Now, the kids are probably gonna be excited when they hear that, and they're gonna meet the coaches tomorrow to emphasize the distancing in the locker room, the mask wearing in the locker room. So similar to what you would see in a classroom, you would see in a locker room. So that would be another big change. And the other thing that I could see appearing in the paper, masks in gymnastics when they're on an event, like if they're about ready to do their four routine, they are not mandated to wear their mask. So you could see a picture of one of our athletes on balance beam with no mask on, and you're like, that's indoors, why don't they have a mask on? That is the one sport, the one caveat, that would, you would not see our athletes with a mask on. Soon as they're done, the mask has to be on, and, you know, back to debate whether they're keeping. So for athletics, that would be two big changes. What about you?
And the honors principals. This could mean we totally, everything went to vote, everything went to vote. Not everybody agreed with every vote, but it was, it was a good process, and a lot of discussion.
So the meeting happened the day before we got the New York State guidance. So we've got the CDC guidance, then we had the reopening meeting, then we got the New York State guidance the day after that, and then the day after that, we had the CVS reopening meeting as well, which is basically following a lot of the same thing that we talked about. But no decision or complete guidance for our district, as we've established yet. We're hoping to meet next week, I think.
When?
Go ahead.
Thursday.
The front six.
So we did make changes, we, so we did make changes, we voted on changes, we made changes. And you said that plan is now, went back and edited out things that we decided.
Right, right, right.
And the one, the great thing about this committee is, we've met, I don't know how many times last year, and when we need to make a change to the plan, we come, we talk about it, we vote, we make a change to the plan. So there are some, there are some things that have been.
There are. And so it has to be fluid, like the chart that we're looking at putting together is, since we don't know what's going to happen going forward, we gotta have a way to respond to any changes in infection rates and all that, to count.
Are we expecting to have shutdowns where there's a positive case, or?
Yeah, we would, we would have, you know, we don't want that to happen, obviously, but we would think that there'll be a case in classroom, or the classroom's quarantined for ten days or fourteen days, whatever it might be. And that class might end up just being remote, the teacher, whether the teacher comes in or does it from home, it's hard to tell. But I would definitely think that that's, that's gonna happen. What we won't have is one student is out on quarantine, or three students are out on quarantine, and they wanna log into the, to a classroom and have instruction in that class that day. Or some people wanna go on vacation, I was gonna say, I wanna go on vacation, they want my family to get quarantined. We won't be, we won't have that ability to stay home, log on, log on, have education at home and call it a day at school. That's not, that's not gonna be an option for us, unless, unless we find a whole, a whole class is quarantined. And it's easier to think about that at the elementary level than it is at the high school, middle school level, but that's, that's where the discussion is right now.
Good question, Nick. Anybody else need clarification on, on the reopening? Okay. All right. Okay, back to minutes as presented. Any of the motion or the minutes from seven thirteen? That was Patty already, all right, and who seconded?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolved Superintendent Schools recommend to the Board of Education to approve the CSC and CPSC recommendations dated eight seventeen twenty-one. Motion, please?
I'll.
Doug?
I'll second.
Crystal? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes. This is a consent agenda. Resolved Superintendent Schools recommend to the Board of Education of the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, and retirements be and are hereby approved. Motion, please?
Sure.
Sure. Second?
I'll second.
Nicole? Any discussion on this?
A question, um, for, it can be for any of the PCB, right, of this section?
Yes.
All right. So for the Rosemary Manchester, is this associate principal position the one that was referenced in the last meeting that would be shared between?
No, good question. This is the middle school associate principal position. The, we did not have a solid, I'll take that back. We had, the committee had selected another candidate, and we couldn't agree the terms with the candidate for the share.
For the elementary share.
For the elementary, so we're working on coverage for that this week.
Is that something that would be reposted, or is it?
So because we've posted for that title twice, we're looking for an internal option, hoping. If we have this option and everybody's comfortable, we're ready to the board. If that doesn't happen, then we would either, we'll talk about retooling, reposting, maybe posting in January. It is, it is there to support teachers, principals, students, and families. That's the purpose of that, that position at the elementary, so. We look at it as super important. And again, I talked about it before, is, you know, you look at all these other small elementary schools all throughout our county and our VOSEs, and we have two law, we have two, we have two elementary schools as large as a lot of districts, larger than, each elementary school is larger than probably half the districts in, in our VOSEs. Think about, bigger than Keene, bigger than Shazee, bigger than, right, bigger than a lot of, a lot of schools. Crown Point, Willesboro, so, and they usually have a principal and a superintendent and other staff as well. So I'm all for sharing a, a associate principal to help these people do what difficult, of course, it's a difficult job. So we're gonna find, we'll find a way.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
For section U, the extracurricular appointments, I'm just curious if, I know there were a number of vacancies, and I was just curious if that's due to lack of interest in instructors to take that role, or if that's because we're not adding you to those positions right now, or, I don't know. Just curious what they have.
So this is, this may be a little, oh, this, maybe normally this is a little more filled, but I think a lot of times, Joanne will know the best, and the principal's gonna know the second best. They start screaming again, those people start showing back up, and you talk to the principal, hey, we're gonna do the sixth grade advisor. And there, I think there's a couple in white that came in, there were a couple that came in my bail locks today, today or yesterday. So you'll find them filled as, hopefully you'll find them filled, but sometimes they're a little vacant, sometimes somebody doesn't wanna be an advisor. Usually they do a good job convincing somebody to take on them.
So it's kind of like putting aside the money, so that should somebody willing, it's there, they're able to do it.
Yeah, I think all of these are in the budget. So the trial club's one, and usually it's a late one where people are like, hey, let's get together, let's run the school playground three places a year, so it comes together, but it's not always, you know, in June or July.
And are those filled by teachers at the school, or can they be filled by any community member with an interest? And are those filled by, um, um, teachers at the school, or can they be filled by any community member with an interest in?
I would say, yeah, actually, I was going to say, class advisors would be the ones that, our teachers would be the ones who fill the class advisors, but that would be inaccurate. We actually have other people who've been class advisors besides teachers in the building. So usually you have to be in the building, I guess, but I would think it's hard not to think of somebody being in the building. And then, like, go ahead.
Oh, no, I just said, yeah, I guess, I can see that, but.
And then music, uh, the drama we've had come from all kinds of different places. Usually there's teachers involved, but we've had different people for drama. Interimals are usually a teacher.
Mr. Maddox, I've met with the music department the other day too, about getting a production going again and getting that program back up and running, and they were very open, and we, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a production to share with our community, so, uh, they were all on board with it, and we're operationalizing that right now.
So like, one of the things, thank you for that, one of the things that happened during COVID was the rate, um, it was like the weekend we shut down, Friday we, Friday we didn't send our bowlers to states. Everybody else said, we're sending our bowlers to states, they turned the buses around, the state turned the buses around that Friday afternoon, after getting some very angry phone calls, I got angry phone calls, but the drama department wanted to still have the play, and they were real, those, those folks were really very upset. I don't think, I don't, maybe their selves, I don't know, they're not back on this list, but it was really kind of out of our hands, but they put a lot of time in, I mean, they, think about it, done all that work, ready to go. Who knows?
Any questions? Anybody else? This one is consent agenda. Resolved. Hold on, do I, I missed that. Yeah. All in, all in favor? Just started talking, passed. So I thought about it, I thought about it. Seven, eight. Okay, back to the subjects. Resolved that Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education of the following resolutions on this consent agenda, home link, contest, non-meditative Sunday practice, association membership, sign letter of understanding, contract, confidential, superintendent superintendent, per the immersed agreement, building level emergency response plans, professional development, and committee appointments, BOE being hereby approved. Motion?
Motion, Cheryl.
Cheryl. Second?
Second, Patty.
Patty? Any discussion on any of these categories?
Just a quick question on, um, some section J, um, with the committee appointments, I'm curious, I didn't know, um, actually where everybody is in those committees and where, um, um, Pauline was, I mean, her committees and those openings.
So we, we did that after Murray.
No, 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 those are.
Right.
But where, where about, what about Patty's positions in those committees? What openings do we know?
She was safety and she was nine, committee of nine. Those are Richard's committees, safety and committee of three.
Okay, I just curious.
Those are, those are in.
Anybody else?
Anyone want to hop on to the response now, or should we wait till we appoint?
The person that is voted in will be taken over.
So we accept the person who we choose tonight to serve on all the base committee? I guess we could decide to appoint whoever Pauline's thought to those two committees.
We could, unless anybody has any gestures to that.
Yeah. Can we do that for the first one? You said whoever was going to be the next board member would have to be on a certain committee.
I mean, certainly, everyone's perspective is valuable, and some people would think that maybe ninety-one, somebody with a little more experience in it, but, um, we have other board members there anyway that can do some guidance, so. Unless anybody's, unless anybody has a little interest in being, you know, committee nine on the safety. Anyone? Okay. Any other questions? Go back and vote this time. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this one will be a roll call. Resolved that Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education of the following resolutions on this consent agenda, transfer, confirmed tax rolls, unauthorized tax levy, American recovery program to be in hereby approved. Motion, please?
I'll motion, Crystal.
Crystal?
I'll second.
Cheryl? Any discussion on anything? All right, roll call, please.
Douglas Beadie?
Yes.
Patty Lunt?
Yes.
Cheryl Mendez?
Yes.
Ed Mayor?
Yes.
Christopher Schaub?
Yes.
Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
And Hope before?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Program, are we going to do the secret separately?
What's that?
We're going to do another, another roll call here for the secret. All right. Yeah, secret wasn't, wasn't a part of that one, yeah? Whereas the Board of Education, Ridgerton Central School District, the board has considered the impacts to the environment and the following scope of work to be completed. Ridgerton Central School District interior door reconstruction and the main building.
I'm in the left.
All right, yes, you may. So that's the motion to move. Crystal, you need a second?
Cheryl, second.
Cheryl, second. The long one. Thank you. Roll call, please?
Douglas Beadie?
Any discussion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, any discussion. Anybody have questions? Thank you.
Douglas Beadie?
Yes.
Patty Lunt?
Yes.
Cheryl Mendez?
Yes.
Ed Mayor?
Yes.
Christopher Schaub?
Yes.
Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
And Hope before?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Thank you. All right, now, additional items, we're going to talk about the Board of Education appointments. So everyone was sent all of the letters of interest from approximately eleven candidates, or, and that was put in the board portal, and was asked to review them, go over, take a look at what the, what the thought of, of how, why they were interested. And so now it's up to us to choose one person for this, for this evening. We talked about process, um, we can give, everyone can talk about particular people that are interested, give us a list of three that they're interested in, to pick out of it, whoever gets the most votes. We, it's open for us to do it however we want to do, in the interest of efficiency. So.
We're, we're, um, very excited that we have eleven applicants from the community. That's wonderful. And thank you to all the applicants for taking their time to, to answer a question. Um, just hoping for timeliness that we don't need to discuss all eleven candidates right now, so. That was the hope, that they're a look before and have talked, one, two, three, and try to narrow it down, and then we can either do the same thing next month, or we can, um, do a subcommittee as another option for the next time around.
Right. Does anybody have any thoughts on process and how we do this? It's up to us.
This time, right?
We'll see.
Because, but because we're a nine-member mo, board, we still have to have at least five people, even though we're not nine people here, have to agree on, on it. So, uh, why don't we just start going, going around the table and, and, do you want to do one, one, two choices, see how that works? All right, let's see here. Start Chris.
Wanted to, um, if, if I could consult the list and come back to me?
Sure, sure, okay. Doug?
Well, I'll start it up then. Uh, my vote is for Mr. Connor. He actually has, uh, he's been on this board before. He had a, he looks at the school a little differently than I do, a little differently than how things run, what is important to his family, what's important to my family.
Okay.
I actually appreciate that and value that, so my vote would be for Mr. Connor.
Great. Patty?
I'm going to ask to pass and prove that to me.
Okay.
Um, I guess one of the options that I like is Shasta Whitford. Um, I like that she is a active PTO member in the past, she's involved in education, actually special education, so.
That's all. Crystal?
Um, so I, again, thank you to everyone that applied. I would say I have two top choices. Um, my first choice would be Mr. Connor, just because he has the experience and to, to get him up and running, I think it would be seamless, and he knows how it works. Um, and my second choice would be Shasta Whitford. She has, um, done many wonderful things for our community. She's come to the Board of Education meetings in the past, and I mean, that's, that's nice of them, we're appointing somebody instead of electing, um, the person that's showing interest. So both Mr. Connors and Ms. Whitford have been very involved in the school system, and I think that's an excellent attribute for any candidate that serves on this volunteer group, that's nice.
That's great. Nicole?
Um, well, I guess I have to second what Crystal said, over with, um, adaptive choices based on their involvement, previous involvement, knowledge, experience.
All right. Um, I'll just, until Chris goes over his stuff. So I have the same opinion. Jeremy, uh, has been a board member in the past, easy to put right in. We know what he's, uh, what he offers, and like Doug said, different perspectives are always welcome. I think, I think we've been pretty happy that over the last several years, we've had a pretty diverse group of people on the board, and not everybody has to agree, but we all respect each other, so that's a nice place to be at. Uh, so Jeremy was my first choice. I was impressed with Shasta's participation with the district so far. I think that's, uh, I think it's, there's value in, in giving people opportunities. Already put a lot of time into the district, who shows their interest in the district, so she's probably number, probably number two, um, going forward. All right, Patty?
We have to say Mr. Connors, are we allowed to ask questions? Like, how long was Mr. Connors on the board before? How long was, are you Mr. Connors?
I am.
Are you? Nice to meet you. It's hard because I'm new.
Yeah.
I knew no one on that post. I mean, I've been in Dayton town for forty-five years, and I still know no one on that post, so, and even though I've read the letters and stuff, so. So how long were you on the board before?
Uh, okay, so I've been on the board twice in the past. Uh, the first time was for a year and a half, or it was two and a half years of one of those, and then I was on for a year.
Were you fulfilling terms?
Uh, so the first time, I started fulfilling a term, then I won a one-year term, uh, in the election, and then the second time, I was fulfilling a term.
And once again, you had to check the lead because you got a job then?
No, I, I did not go for reelection after my first election. Thank you, sorry.
And you said why, you just?
Oh, I, I didn't go for reelection because I had just changed jobs and bought a new house that needed most of my time.
That's good. I'm good. I would say Mr. Connors.
Okay. Chris?
Uh, I'd like to, uh, my first choice would be Courtney Miller, and, uh, my next choice would be Patrick Garson.
Okay. So, right now.
Chris, can you spell it out? I mean it.
Collaborate.
Garson is, uh, is, uh, somebody I know from the, uh, the town Democrats. Um, he, uh, has handled, uh, online, uh, marketing. He's very computer savvy. We've had, you know, good discussions about both, uh, you know, policy and, uh, technology. So I think that, that he'd be a good, that, um, Courtney Miller is, uh, a, uh, mom that I know from, uh, activities in the community, and I know that, uh, she's looking for a way to get more involvement in the community.
Thank you.
Well, based, based on what you mentioned, I think, I think it's admirable we have so many people interested, and, and this is a, I don't want to dissuade people from not wanting to participate in the district, so I think we, we hope to, the people that are show, are showing interest and may not get invited back to this time or next, next month, that we help them find avenues for them to get involved in the school district. And, you know, there's always committees, and there's also an election again when we run for, for the year, so there's always an opportunity for that. Great, thanks. So that means, right now, one, two, three, four, there's five, uh, for Jeremy, he got the most votes already, and then Shasta, one, two, Shasta got one first and then three seconds. So unless, everybody, everybody have the same numbers?
Hmm.
Okay. All right.
Oh, no, Ed, can you say the numbers again?
Yeah, so, all right, so first, first choice, uh, Jeremy got one, two, three, four, five. Uh, Shasta got one for first choice, but she got three more for second. And, uh, then the other ones were the ones that, um, Chris mentioned. All right. Everyone good with that? Any questions on it? All right, so now we just need to go through the process of appointing to the board.
Um, do we need a motion from the board to appoint that?
All right, a motion that based on the discussion and the vote so far for the appointment, we appoint Jeremy Connors to the Board of Education. I need to, that's my motion, so I need a second.
I'll second.
Doug? Okay. Any more discussion? Let's move on to the board.
Let's just clarify, but it's the, to fill the, uh, expired, to fill the?
It's only to the election.
Only till the election.
On the expiration term, March.
Uh, for, for?
March.
March.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I sent out an email, I had to run my, yeah, so it's only till the end and then, you know, go from there. All in favor?
Aye.
No, abstains?
Just for clarity, we'll, we'll send out an advertisement for people that's, that can either say, please, we submit my letter that I already gave you, or new people can submit a letter, and that is for the remainder of, of this year for Pauline Stone's president.
It's only till the election.
Till the election, for Pauline's, right.
So, and now that we just went through that process, can we just talk about what we'll do next month, so, right?
We could have it the same way unless, unless anyone wants to do a more complicated thing.
So the option, we can do the same thing again next month and just ask people to make sure they, make the applicants in advance, or we can do a subcommittee with five board members?
Less than five.
Four or less, that would basically do the work and then come to the board and recommend one person?
No, I, I'm going to say I like the option of this, reading everybody's letters, seeing what everybody says, and then all of us discuss it. No, we need that, so. I love you all, but I like that.
We're just clarifying, so this one for fulfilling marks is, is just till the election again.
Yes.
So Pauline's, the board would only appoint until the election?
Until the election.
So they, there's, um, time left on their seats, but it's only done at the election, and the board appoint only till the election.
Okay.
We'll send out to the board, um, tomorrow, who will be, how many seats we will be looking for next year too?
Mark.
Three, two, three, two, one, square, we're going to go now, because the board made the point.
Yeah, um, you're up. Yeah, um, you're up.
Welcome to the board.
Jeremy?
Okay.
Chelsea's first meeting.
Rachel.
I'm just going to say a thing just a little bit.
Yes, okay.
So I, Jeremy Connors, you solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of the North. And I will fulfill and discharge the duties of, for an election until 5/17/22.
I do. Thanks.
I would like to say that we had some interesting letters, um, and, and because we have to take the face value of the letters only, without doing some, you know, asking and stalking or whatever, uh, but I, I think it's always nice. Some of them were really people that were excited to participate, which is great. But it, it didn't give much information as to why they want to participate and what value they bring and what perspective they bring. So, so it would be good if, if people are willing to, if they want to redo their letters and a new one, um, because it's, it's important. It's great that they're excited, but it did give us something to, to, to look at as well.
Couldn't you invite them to a meeting, just if we want to ask them questions like I asked Mr. Connors or?
Sure.
And I guess, and I also wanted to, we had 11 people. Where were those 11 people when we ran elections this year and we were having a really hard time? Do you know what I'm saying? It's not that long ago.
No.
So I, I just, I'm trying to understand why some of them didn't want to. I know you had to go out and get 25 signatures and I know during COVID that was hard. It really was. Some people didn't want to talk to you.
I, I was saying in defense of all the other 10 people and myself, uh, that's exactly why I didn't do it this year was.
I figured.
Having to go out door to door for COVID, uh, was.
I had a couple doors slammed in my face.
Yeah.
And I have a mask on and I stayed away to, right, I kept it on a clipboard with gloves on to get my 25.
And so for like me, I, I'm vaccinated, but my daughter's not, so I didn't want to go to the door.
I had my little tag standing up as that.
Yeah, so I mean, I get that.
I was just wondering.
No, it's always hard to guess and always, especially when there's, when there's controversy, you get a lot of people interested in joining the board too, right? Things are great, not so much, so.
Oh, it's hard. I, I thought my first meeting, and again, I love everybody, but I thought the first meeting was hard. I actually went home to school today and I think I'm in on my head, but I calmed down and thought about things and.
Well, ha- having said that, you know, and like earlier Doug, you know, stepped up and asked a question. We should never, this should be a place for us to talk about things in public.
Right.
Um, sometimes on some boards, these just get done for efficiency super fast, but if it's important, I think we should speak up and say something. Also, you know, um, there are resources on the NISBA website, uh, which brings me to the next point on the additional items. Uh, the NISBA School Board Conference is going to be held in New York City at the end of October, uh, 24th to 26th. So if anybody's interested, you should, you should say something now so that we can sign you up and get reservations and all of that.
Little, little, little cost to a board member who want to go. We'll cover, um, your room, the conference, and I, I forgot how the food works down there.
Um, usually, I, I don't, I don't remember because I just usually end up paying for it and.
Oh, you get reverts?
Reverts?
We do that at the conference.
I think, I think it's included in the conference, isn't it?
No.
In the big conference?
So, but I, but even if it wasn't, if it wasn't in the conference, then we had.
We've got to do per DM.
Or DMs, so there's very little cost to somebody who want to.
So the, the, the drive down there, mileage or if you want to train or whatever, it's all taken care of and so is the cost of the conference. And it's really, I think, very educational, uh, for us to talk to other board members about different things that they've experienced. Or sometimes there are issues that may be coming to us that haven't reached us yet. The, um, the last day also has the, uh, school members', um, business, which is, which is when we vote on things. So for example, later on, we will, we will get, you'll all get a survey in an email. And there are questions that NISBA attorneys or lobby system that we have established in the School Board Association, we put out these questions. We all get to answer our opinion, right? Do you like this or should this be changed? And out of all those questions, those that are significantly related one way or the other, yes or no, they get put in a list to become resources. And those get discussed by board members throughout the state. And then at the end, at that conference, in the near session at that conference, board members vote from all over the state on what, what issues we want to have pushed to lobby for legislation. So many times, board members like you will have an opinion, something they want to have addressed, you know, they push forward to the point that where at some point legislation deems it necessary and that it impacts education. So this is one of the few places we actually have a strong voice or can have a voice on, on impacting education if you want to. And of course, that's something we can do with, in, in support with the staff, administration, guidance and, and anytime. And likewise, if there's something in your team that, you know, a lot of things we want to change and improve, but if there's something that you think we can try to have an impact on, get always brought up from the district as a whole and then taken to the state. So we have that opportunity. We just need to choose to exercise it. Um, I've represented the North Country Region, so the resolutions component happens every year. And one person from each region is chosen to go down to Albany. I did that for three years and then my last year I was chosen to be chair for all the state. So, uh, I got a part of it. The whole process is, is pretty neat. It's, uh, and it has an impact. So if anybody's interested, let me know.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Um, I noticed that the school speed limit signs went up on Route 22 recently.
Well, this one went down, third.
Yeah, but the speed limit sign. The sign is up, so now the, just so the community is aware that, you know, no speeding in school zones.
Yeah, we, we actually, um, requested that. I'm not sure the town was, I don't know if I even recall the town.
It was the state. The state came and did a study on the DOC.
Uh, we had requested that they look at reducing the, the speed limit and we've requested that they're build sidewalks in certain spots as well. And it was nice to see. I saw the signs go up, it was nice to see, so.
Is it just on 22?
Yeah.
They didn't do it on, we requested to spell it on 22, yeah.
Um, just to follow up, uh, the conference, it sounds interesting, but I feel like the numbers are going. I just don't feel like going into it. But, um, uh, the, uh, going back to the, the next board position, it was really awesome to, to hear, um, Jeremy answer. Is, um, are we able to say if you submit in, we encourage you to come to the meeting in case, uh, board members have questions of you, as a potential candidate?
That's up to us to, to choose to do it, that's what.
That was in the, uh, original announcement too.
It says to, to, it said clearly.
Suggested coming to this meeting.
Oh, suggested coming, okay. I just want to make sure that that was clearly available to everybody.
All right, public comment. Anybody else want to do public comment? Quick poll, Tim, we don't need one, we're not going to executive session. Are we going to executive session? No, we're still going to the meeting yet.
We have, we, I don't think we have some need to on that topic, negotiations. So we could have talked, we could have talked about it. Our current committee's negotiations has, I think the negotiations committee hasn't met, um, during the negotiation process two or three times since our last board meeting. And we hope to meet again, maybe before school or right after school starts.
Does anybody have any interest in going to executive session or better, or just talk about it once we meet again with them?
Want to carve out time in September?
We do that. All right. This is no executive session. So resolved the board of education during the meeting at 7:16. Any motion?
I'll watch.
Crystal, Doug, second. Oh, any questions? What, what, Chris second that? Chris second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, good night.